The pulsation by the back door.
Yes, the one to the outside door where you have the fence in there. Yeah, that's the next one.
Um, I think, I don't think so.
Great.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order. The first item on agenda is the approval minutes of September thirty. Okay, I get a motion by Commission eleven. I'll second it. Can you approve the minutes? You have any changes you want to make for them? Okay, the, uh, the vote is unanimous, then we adopt those minutes. Item two is an update from the registered deeds. So.
Hi, I thought I'd come in and give you an update of what's happening over in our office. Good to see you this morning. So we're ahead of last year with their numbers, which is great. Uh, our document count's a little bit higher. And, um, compared to this time last year, we're about forty-two thousand above last year at this time. I know it's not a lot, but it's good. You know, we're, we're ahead.
Better be ahead.
Yeah, and we're about another ten thousand ahead on our copies. So about fifty-two thousand roughly we're ahead this time last year.
Could I just ask a question? I know that yesterday, you know, we're still putting together the third quarter.
Right.
Report because, um, you know, we want to make sure that all of, that, you know, we've recognized the revenues and paid the bills that are due, you know, through the third quarter. Uh, so I know Diane was working on it. Did she have your, uh, September numbers?
She does.
Okay, great.
Yeah, she has her September.
I knew that was one of the list of things that we needed to do to put together the third quarter budget.
All the numbers are in. Um, we are, we've sent about, I, I did some lists here that paid to the, the state, we're up to about twelve million, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars that we've sent. We, last year, I think we were close to, at the end of the year, we were at sixteen, um, almost seventeen million that we sent, but I'm hoping that we'll get on track and get up to that. Um, we might be a little low as far as those numbers, getting those to the state by the end of the year. But as far as the county income, we're doing okay with that. Um, we've scanned all the images in, all the images that we have are now scanned in and they're available to the public, which is a great accomplishment. They can have all that done. All the books are in. We have, um, books that still have to be restored and preserved, obviously, and that's just a yearly thing that we're doing. With regard to that, the staff is doing excellent, doing a great job, um, with everything. As you know, our, the deputy will be retiring next year.
So I anticipate. You did not know that.
Yes.
Well, I did not.
Oh, sorry. I thought you knew that she'll be retiring, um, next year. So we will be looking to add a, potentially a staff member probably by March, um, to have some training before she leaves because we don't, no one just leave without having, and I know we reduced someone last year, so we were kind of, so that's just something that I see in the horizon. Um, one of the reasons why I wanted to come in and talk to you today though is that, in addition to kind of giving you an update of what's going on with registry.
I'm sorry, just to, to that, do we have a retirement date for when?
Uh, she is hoping by, um, the end of the year, December thirty-first.
Of next, of next, not this year.
Year, but next year. Yeah. That's why I'm looking for March potentially.
Yeah, I understand.
Have that, you know, that training time to, put it that in place. Um, another issue that's come up is that, um, our servers need to be replaced. You know, and, um, Fiddler, our vendor, has approached me about that. So we really need to get that done. Or we need to get on, um, a system called Bastion, which is a higher level security system. Um, six counties right now, registries are on Bastion. Um, Rockingham has their own, uh, they're, they're not using it. Um, Hillsborough was thinking about going on it soon and Merrimack is not part of Fiddler. So we're the only other county that's not on Bastion.
All the smaller ones are on it.
No, everyone, everyone except for Rockingham.
Those three.
And those three. And Merrimack's not even part of the Fiddler, you know, network, right? Carroll County's actually.
They never have been.
No, they never have been. So, so Carroll County's actually in the midst of getting on it now. They're going on that. So, it's been proven, I guess, is what I'm saying, is that it, the transition is very seamless, what I've been told by all the registers, that they've had no problem with it. The security is much higher. I've spoken with Paul, our technical, you know, IT person at length about it. He said it's the wave of the future, that that's where everyone's going, that apparently Riverside has its own system. Um, and so I'm coming here, I guess, to say, you know, to talk about whether or not we should go on to Bastion. Um, I would like to. The cost is more, is more, um, but I've been able to reduce in preliminary negotiations with them and in a, to see, you know, if it's something we want to do, is I've gotten the hardware down from twenty-four thousand to eighteen thousand a year. So we're saving about six thousand dollars a year. Uh, but the bottom line is, is that for next year, because of our replication costs with our contract, that they keep going higher every year, we would, it would cost the county about another six thousand dollars, um, to go on to Bastion.
In total?
In total. And I am thinking about this concept, not that it's completely tied to this, but charging potentially a ten dollar a month fee for a subscription to Laredo for our account users. Pretty much every other county is doing that and, um, you know, would bring in enough to cover it and more. Um, we have about a hundred and fifty-two active accounts right now. It would actually clear out some of the accounts that we're not using. I mean, even if we, about a hundred accounts, you know, we can have another twelve thousand potentially, you know, in revenue that way, that would definitely make up the difference, you know, for that. I, yes, Ray, sorry.
Whenever, whenever you're finished, I, I just have a card for you.
I have these, um, these are just things that, there's just two papers that, um, that talk about Bastion that I could hand out to you that, um, they store the information in Iowa, um, in a facility there as well as in, um, New Jersey. The dormant information is, is stored in, um, New Jersey. And that's just gives an explanation of it.
So, so Fiddler's tied in with these folks, is that?
They're part of it. Yes, they provide, this is all Fiddler's. They're, they own this, they serve it, they employ people who take care of it there.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and so they're, and I, and I think in light of what happened, you know, I mean, you know, we'd still be able to get on, even if we're, if the county, you know, we had problems. We could get on in another location, you know, either in a home office.
What's going on with Iron Mountain? We still using those?
No.
So Iron Mountain's not open now?
No, we never, yeah, I've never used them when I've been here. That's been ten years.
Long since gone.
Yeah, and so, I do think it's a great service as far as from everything that I've read and investigated, I think our documents will be really taken care of and protected. You know, that's the main issue here is the security. Um, but again, we need to make a decision. You know, because we're gonna have the servers, you know, if once, if we decide, okay, we're just gonna stick with what it is and we'll get new servers, we're gonna be with those servers for a while. And then we may have to, have no choice at some point, if there's something happens, that then we'll have to then go over to Bastion eventually and be forced to do it.
Yeah.
So that's my concern. Um, I also may have a little bit of, I mean, I don't want to say it because I'm not sure. I may actually have a little bit of credit also because of reducing the hardware, um, price, you know, for at least a month, but that wouldn't be a, a lot extra. We're still, you know, we're under budget too this year, and I think that we'll be okay next year with, with, if I start that, especially the subscription.
Yeah. So when would you try this? When would you want to start this, like the beginning of the year or something?
Yeah, it would probably be the beginning of the year. It takes them, um, it takes them a little time to do the transition, but I think that we would just start off at the beginning of the year, but a part of the issue is, is we could, we would have to amend the current contract, I think, that we have.
Yeah.
You know, with, and, um, we could, and they're willing to actually extend it a little bit and we'd get pretty good terms with regard to the increase in Bastion. Bastion is based upon the price, how much that we have in our data, how much data is there. So I have gone through with other counties to see kind of what their pricing is.
Yeah.
And we're in line, you know, we're probably actually doing better, you know, with what they've proposed, because I, I've been holding out and holding out.
Um, well, while we, while we put the budget together, because we're gonna be starting that process pretty quick, but next year we can, we can talk about that.
Right, as far as the, as, as, right, but it's just, um, what concerns, I, concerns me is that, uh, yeah, we can do that. I mean, that's gonna come up soon. I know that they're, they'll say we need to get the services.
Budget for next year pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just will, I just wanted to give you a heads up on that then.
Quick, quick thing. Um, how about use utilizing, um, some of the funds that you have in the deeds equipment account?
Yeah, that's crossed my mind as well. I'm using that now currently for the hardware, but I was thinking maybe of, that might be a way of trying to do that as well.
I'm getting a balance, uh, just so we have an idea.
Well, we have about right now seventy-seven thousand, but then about another twenty-four is gonna be taken out at the end of the year. So we're gonna roughly be about what, like fifty, you know?
So, so my, my point being that that money is, could be available to offset, you know, what we, you know, what we're looking to do. Um, and, and.
Well, maybe we work on the budget.
Well, maybe we don't need to touch the, maybe we don't need to charge.
Charge it all around.
And pay it out of the deeds equipment.
I mean, charge a subscription?
Right. I, I, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out.
County, yeah, we're pretty much the only ones that are doing it and they're charging, yeah, they're.
I mean, the prescription might be, you know, if it's, if it's not a ton of money and, uh, we have a, a, a broader security.
Yeah.
I mean, the security is a big issue for the deeds.
I'm, I'm just throwing out options, you know.
Yeah, that's what we're doing also. I mean, I, you know, in the end, you know, it's.
Well, we're gonna, you know, get the budget together.
Works best for the county.
We'll destroy the things on the list.
Yeah, we're, you know, I'm just throwing out options so that, you know, you, the three commissioners, which we'll have at the time, will have the options of, you know, knowing that it's possible to pick up the, you know, money in, in other, and then you have to make it to, you know, you guys, you collectively can make a decision.
How much budget? Seventy-seven you said in the?
Right, and that's about another twenty-four that, yeah, and there'll be twenty-four taken out for the hardware. So, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, there'll probably be another, what, seven, five hundred going into it?
Yeah, I would say that for the end of the year, yeah, because we're.
So what I'm saying is there's gonna be a balance in that account. That's definitely only a point, so we don't have to budget it. You can just hold all that account. Well, that's correct.
The difference.
That, that's a kind of set up by statute. Uh, you can charge so and so much per document. It goes into the account, but it can only be used for, um, you know, certain, it can't be used for operating expenses. It can only be used for capital expenses, but this would certainly be considered a part of that. You know, no, you can't use for personnel, as an example.
Right. It's just we, um, thinking what we would have per year. Yeah, I mean, we probably have enough to do that every year. I mean, they're,
Just to find.
Depending on where we're going forward, yeah. And, and what always was my concern is, you know, the definition of equipment, you know, as far as, I don't have a problem with including Bastion in that, no, but, you know, we'll be taking it, clearing it out every year, which is, it's fine.
Well, we'll talk.
If it's best, yeah.
Yeah, we'll talk about.
So.
Well, we, but we got, we got a lot of things going on, you know, in terms of what the budget would look like next year.
Right, so they're just, you know, they're looking, I guess, to, I think they're really concerned about the server. So, I guess, if it gets to the point where it's, you know, we need an answer before we meet again, then we'll, we'll probably have to get together to talk about it.
Yeah, well, I mean, that, that's something that certainly qualifies for the, out of the equipment fund.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, good, as long as you feel right.
You know, depending on the nature of the cost.
Yeah.
We can share it. I mean, there's all kinds of things you can do.
Right.
Right, well, but what I'm, I think, you know, it might not wait for the budget is what.
Right, right, right.
Right.
But my concern is just making sure that I have approval to amend the, um, the contract so that, and do waiver, because, I mean, I can stick with the contract we have, but I'd still at least need to amend it to include the Bastion cost, which I think, you know, is very reasonable and it's saving, you know, to me that instead of waiting and having an, um, an issue.
I don't have a problem with you amending the contract, just more.
No, I think that's a wise thing to do. And, you know, we spent.
The security stuff.
So much money in this county, you know, over time enhancing the, the computer security, you know, which, yes, we had a breach, but the nice part is, other than the inconvenience that it costs the employees, we, we lost no data. Right, you know, we didn't lose any money. We didn't, we were fully insured. We, you know, we, we were all covered. And, and I think that's because of the security that we have put in, you know, unlike other places that have just gotten killed, you know, we, we, and, interestingly enough, the, you know, I authorized Paul to, um, test the employees, you know, by sending them.
Random.
Random emails that we believe is what.
Caused the problem.
Caused the problem last time. And it's, it's going pretty good. Um, you know, Paul gives me a report like once a month and, and, uh, I always get nervous that my name's not on it, you know, or doing something, but we.
It's pretty easy to do.
It, it is easy to do. They're very convincing.
Yeah.
You know, they're very convincing.
I'm at the point where I.
You know, from when we first, oh, excuse me.
That's all right. I've just been, I mean, I get, you know, I'm like you, I get a hundred and fifty emails a day. I'm trying to, I'm going through them. I'm just saying, you know.
No, Janet.
Delete.
That's why you're both working so well, Janet, because I, I, you know, I, I don't know who's real, who isn't.
Well, you, you really don't know. And, and it's best to delete and then have them call you and say, hey, you didn't answer my email, you know, and, and, and a lot of them are, are cleared, you know, held and not sent to you. Um, I probably have thirty or forty a day that are captured.
Yeah.
You know, that I see at nine o'clock every morning. I get a list of all the ones that are captured and, uh, uh, I can see that on the weekend on, on, you know, because I can't see them on my phone. I can see the regular ones on my phone, but the ones that are captured, I have to see it on my computer. So on Monday mornings, I'm, I probably have a hundred that I need to scan through to make sure they're not, and they aren't legitimate.
Yeah, and I just want to reiterate that I did speak with Paul about this, you know, a lot. And he was, he was on board and said he thought it was a good idea. You know, I, I know what I don't know. I wanted to make sure that he, you know, who is the expert in this, you know.
Bottom line is we're protecting the public's information, so that's.
That is, and, you know, also mentioned that, you know, I, I've cut down, I cut down the budget, you know, our operating expense the last couple of years, and the hardware's been cut down almost in half with this right now.
Yeah.
So, um, it was up higher. Now we're down, we went down to twenty-four. Now this will bring it down to eighteen and I still might be able to get a little bit more off, so.
Maybe we should talk about that access, you know, the question of charging access on the accounts. I mean, I, it's, if, if there's enhanced security, which is really important in the deeds office, as you know.
Of course.
You know, you got people putting in social security numbers, going after all kinds of stuff. Is that being deducted now?
Yes.
Because that was a list.
Any financial information or social security numbers are automatically, are deducted.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's part of the state statute also that we have to do that, so. So as far as.
When those documents filed, I'm just curious how that's working out. When the document's filed, does it have the actual numbers? Do you have the number or, or you don't have the number? You have the number, but the documents that are all for public.
They're not allowed to touch the original, you know, document, so we have to adapt it.
Okay, so you guys have to do that?
Yes, we redact it.
That's the statute.
Yeah.
One of the ones. Yeah, you know, that, um, the gentleman who, who retired, that was.
I know.
Kirk, Neil Kirk.
Yeah.
Yeah, Neil Kirk got that through before he retired.
Okay, well.
Whatever, I don't know about everything's going well, knock on wood. So.
I'm glad to hear that things are going well.
So how are we leaving, is it, with, with Ram, let him amend that contract and try to move forward with that? Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, have a good rest of the day.
We'll talk to you soon.
Sorry, oh, no, that's, I don't like paperwork here in case.
All right. We got item three, which is enhancing the housing conversion CDBG program. That's that enhanced in the housing, uh,
That's the one.
Program with St. Anthony's.
That's right, through St. Anthony's and, uh, uh, apparently the grant's been approved. So I just, uh, wanted to let you know that, that that was approved, you know, based on your, you know, partially based on our participation. Okay, so, and we just, I just got that on Monday or Tuesday.
One of those days, yeah.
That said it was approved.
Then I just need to have you stick around for all the new business, okay, for, for a minute?
Okay.
Um, yeah, I have old business.
And Diane, Diane, Diane is a piece of old business.
So, item four is upcoming events. Okay, so item five, all the new business. What do you got, Diane?
Um, I have the DB unit prosecutor grant for you to, for thirty thousand dollars, um, for you to authorize and sign the document.
All right, so a motion to approve and accept that grant, Commission eleven, yeah, seconded by myself, that vote should end.
Yeah, that's a, that's a state grant.
That's a state grant, yeah.
So, far as we know, the state's still running.
Yeah.
So.
Don't call the Social Security Administration, I can tell you that.
Oh, really?
Yeah, because you're not gonna get too far.
So Sean, I do need.
Don't call the IRS.
Your certificate. I need both of you to sign this and then George has a whole bunch of, you have to sign it and then show everything.
I'll do it inside.
Okay. All right.
Question I want to ask you, if you have the opportunity to talk to Donna, Donna, about our ability to access CDBG funds.
I, yes.
Full of warming center.
Yeah.
If that's potential, that we could take to Richard's cause.
And, um, I forwarded this on to you, Ray.
Yeah.
Um, and what, she had to go to the state, uh, to CDBG. And they came back with stating, um, Dover and Rochester are entitlement cities. And because they're beneficiaries of this, that maybe it's Dover and Rochester that need to apply for the CDBG.
Okay.
Because they're.
Well, they're entitlement communities, but we're, we're entitled to certain amount, a certain amount as a county, but whether they.
But the beneficiaries are Rochester.
The beneficiaries, the people who are actually getting the, actually getting the service.
Mm-hmm. You know, in the past, when we've done CDBG, uh, and I've asked her the question like every which way.
Right.
And this, it comes back to that. So I don't know if reaching out to the Dover and Rochester, and I don't know if Summersworth's an entitlement.
I don't, I, I do not believe they are. I don't think they are.
If they can access through their entitlement, some CDBG funds for that. But in the past, when we've done CDBG for anything, it's been for the small towns. We don't.
Well, we, yeah.
Well, Rochester town.
We did Rochester town out there.
I think it's, but I think it's because they, they were at their capacity. The city was.
Oh, okay.
But that's what I'm being.
And, and the city wasn't a direct beneficiary of that. It was one of their businesses in there.
Right.
Yeah.
It was a business.
I'm wondering, okay.
I don't know if you, there are additional questions you want me to ask?
What happens, what happens, yeah, what would happen if we could demonstrate, uh, say twenty-five percent of the population is, well, actually probably be closer to forty percent of the population is from Summersworth in the towns. We could demonstrate that.
You think you can do that?
I think we can demonstrate at least twenty-five percent of it. So what I'm saying is so, so that, say the cost of, just say for round numbers, it was a million bucks, okay, and, and we applied, I think our cap is for half a million, if I remember correctly, right? There's half a million on capital, if I remember. Uh, so we would take twenty-five percent of the half a million, so we could pick up like a hundred grand.
Mm-hmm.
That's the question I'm, I like to.
All right, I'll, I'll follow up with her on.
Yeah, tell her. I don't know if that's.
Because she wasn't, when I explained to her, you know, the nuances of this, that it was on county property.
Right.
We don't contribute to the building, but we would be contributing to the operating costs, right?
Right.
That's my understanding of the project. Um, she said she would have to contact CDBG and they, that's what they came back with.
Well, why don't you ask this question as well? What happens if we have, we have a, uh, an agreement with both title, I think, all three of us file an application, meaning Dover for some of their capacity, Rochester for some of their capacity, and the county.
Okay.
You following the cover, uh, the towns?
Okay.
And you, you, you follow what I'm talking about?
And what I can do, I'll see if she's available, maybe to come in and.
Yeah.
We can talk to her.
Yeah, that would be good. We could do that.
Um.
Yes, you know, it's an unusual circumstance.
Right, well, it's a, well, it's a new, it's thinking out of the box.
Because you're doing a project with Dover and Rochester, who are entitlement communities, so I don't know.
Summersworth is not, so Summers.
I, I believe they are. I'm almost.
The emails back from the state were referred to Rochester and Dover specifically, so, um.
So we're gonna ask that question. We could use the county's capacity to cover the folks who.
Yeah, because you're doing this in with Dover and Rochester and Summersworth. So I think that's, if, I think we were doing it just ourselves and we could demonstrate, but Rochester and Dover are.
Hmm, I wonder.
Direct beneficiaries of this.
I, I'd wait, you know, there's ways to find out, right? Well, I'd wait and find out after you, you got such a warm reception in Dover yesterday. I, I think I'd wait and find out.
You know, yeah, where you're gonna go pull it.
If this is even gonna happen, right? Yeah, so. It was interesting.
But I can, I'll, I can ask Donna if she can come down and meet with you if you have further questions and.
Well, I think raised points are good, will be.
To wait.
When, when is, when is the next round? The round's usually, uh, January and June, isn't it?
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
That's some of the applications, like this fall. I don't know, something's cooking in my brain in Rochester, though. Applications.
Well, they have two different, they have two different, uh, windows.
And there's two different, there's two different.
Programs.
Programs, yeah, yeah.
All right, let me know. I, I mean, I can ask her some additional questions, you know.
That would be the question I just brought up, I'll see that there's any other habit for it. I don't, a lot of things change.
It's sounding like it's not something, you know, she's, if she, if it's something that she could do, you know, that we could do, let's say, I mean, it could be.
Well, I'm not, I was just thinking, yeah.
She would say, yeah, you know, that's, but she's, it's not sounding like she thinks that this will work. That's why she would refer to the state, so.
Okay, well.
She knows the ins and outs of this probably better than the people.
Than the people in the state love that. Okay. Uh, I don't know if this is all the new business that I've met. Uh, City of Summersworth on, um, Monday night in Rochester, uh, both city councils. Um, but just, just for the record, yeah, uh, Summersworth City Council supported unanimously to endorse, uh, the audals that I worked out with the Man's and City Managers, certainly Rochester. I met with Dover City Council last night, um, through a lengthy discussion, they've decided to put the warming center out, or at least the, the concept out for a public hearing in Dover to be held in a few weeks. Uh, um, they're asking me about the RFP, so that's why I wanted to get this forward. So how are we making, how is there progress for that?
Almost complete, completed this week.
Completed this weekend. So, uh, let's talk about that. Time for advertising on that. So you're looking at only a thirty-day window, maybe?
I, I would suggest a thirty-day window because, you know, there, there's, and you can correct me anywhere wrong, but I expect it to be a contractor who will then need to reach out to subs to, to put this together. So I think we need to give them a thirty-day window. Is that reasonable?
I like it.
Okay.
All right, so let's look at the calendar so I can figure out what, uh, what we're gonna be doing with this.
Um, so let's, let's talk about getting it out, um, uh, next, next week.
If we can get it out next week and get a thirty-day window, we're talking about November, um, by November fourteenth or probably something like that.
Yeah, mid-November.
The Dover City Council, hang on.
You know, it's just, it's just really, you know, after I got the report from you last night on the Dover City Council, of course, you know, I think about it all night long and, and do, if Dover says no to this.
All those deals.
Then the deal's off everywhere.
Right, it's still, the deal's off.
So do we want to put, well, it's not our time. I'm worried about the time for anybody that might be interested in pursuing the project. Is it fair to have them put all this time in for something that we don't even know is, is gonna happen?
I don't think it is. I don't think we should be wasting anybody's time at Dover.
Well, I don't think, I, I think what Dover wants to do is hold a public hearing about, based on the, we, we had two extremes last night at Dover. Uh, one group's.
Uh, one group saying that we're not doing enough. That it should be a full-time shelter somewhere in Stratford County, operating three sixty, seven days a week, three sixty-five, and then you've got the other end of the spectrum. Saying we shouldn't be doing anything, nothing, zero, so uh. It seems to me that when they have the public hearing, depending on the nature of how the city council votes. Maybe they should have the hearing, maybe we could present the concept. Maybe I can go down and present the concept at that public hearing, make sure the councils have the concept. Uh, now, they can have, they can have a hearing. On the twenty-second of October. So if they have the concept, they're not gonna have any number tied to it, cause we won't have the RFP back, so we're getting no idea, I mean, we can guess the estimates. We can come up with some kind of, you know, rate and what it might, might cost. It's no different than any other capital improvement. They put numbers like we do in our capital improvement program. You estimate the cost, and then you put it out to bid.
Yeah, u- usually we estimate it though, you know, and, and I don't mean this in any way offensively, Dougie, but, I mean. Like with the nursing home, we, the estimate we put together was with uh, you know, with an architect that actually designed it. But, but on the other hand, you know, you know the size of it, so you could, it's. It's math, you know, you can say. That's.
Well, that's it.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're, that's, that's what I was talking about.
So, you know, it's ninety-eight hundred square feet, uh, if you times it by. But, but what's, what's commercial building cost?
Twenty-five or fifty?
So you're gonna be in four million dollar range, right? Roughly.
Then if you add in architects and stuff like that, that just drives a price even.
Well, we're not gonna be doing, I mean.
I'm not, yeah, I wasn't suggesting that, I was just.
What we're doing is we're just gonna put the concept plan out.
And with a budget number.
Not even the budget number, just put a concept out and tell them, here you go, what can you build?
Well, somebody's gonna say, yeah.
I mean, they're gonna look at the concept plan, I mean, we, we gotta have some FFNE in there, you gotta have some, you know. Furnitures and equipment in the building, we're gonna use all the, all the used stuff, I was thinking we're gonna use the bunks that are already unwilling. You know, I'm talking about the interior of the building. We're gonna probably use some of the old bunks, the old beds that we have uh at Riverside that we end up cycling out. Um, maybe, but we can ask for some donations too for some of the other stuff that we're gonna have, we're gonna need in there, but it's gonna need a kitchen.
Yeah, the donations, I think that's come from, to offset operations instead of offsetting hardware.
Tight costs, right.
Tight costs and hook up to water and sewer.
Yeah, fortunately, that's, yeah, fortunately, there's water, sewer, and electricity that one right by there.
Yeah, right.
That's tough.
That's gonna, you gotta cost to tie it in.
Yeah, we, yeah, we run, that's one fortunate thing, is there's not a big run.
So you're probably looking around four million bucks by the time we get done.
Well, cause somebody's gonna ask.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you know, somebody's gonna ask during that public hearing, well, how much money is it gonna be? You know, and, and.
Oh, yeah.
And the way the contract splits up, it's gonna be based on equalized assessed evaluations, so Dover's gonna get the largest share.
The longest, but largest share, and that's gonna be.
Does Dover realize, like, Summersworth could drop this within a year and then? Well, I would.
Yeah, I know, Summersworth.
My, my humble opinion is if Dover says no, Summersworth's not gonna do it this year.
Right, right.
I mean, why would they if there's, when I went in front of Dover, some, uh, the Summersworth City Council, when, when George was. Unavailable. Um, I mean, they, they were hesitant then because there's no future.
There's no plan.
There's no plan, you know, and this has been going on for all these years. I wouldn't be shocked if Summersworth said, nope. You know, Dover's out, you know, they might be in for this year, but, but without a plan, I. I think Summersworth would, you know, should reconsider, maybe they'll agree with it, but. If, it, there's no end in sight without.
Agreed to at the beginning, cause we had a plan. We had a plan with the old nursing home, it was, they had a plan, so they were willing to host it and deal with their costs. If the plan goes out the window, then everybody's on their own. That's, that's the bottom line.
Which is gonna cost way.
Which is gonna cost way more money to the property taxpayer, but, you know, they, 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 they don't, they're not getting that part, they're not getting that part of the equation. Even though I've tried to stress that to them a hundred times, they don't listen.
Right.
Because it's all based on emotion. They're not listening to facts, facts don't matter. The facts don't matter, they don't care about that.
Well, plus, we need to get permission from the delegation.
Right, we gotta get permission from the, the delegation to vote it down, you know? And so that was the argument last night, one of the arguments that was made, you shouldn't went to the delegation first, I'm saying, no. Why would I waste the time with the delegation if you're not gonna fund the project? I'm certainly not gonna go, I told the delegation, we weren't gonna go to the delegation to fund the project, because they wouldn't go for it.
Right.
So, guess what? The statutory responsibility is with the, is with the municipalities, we're only in this, we're only trying to help them out.
Right.
They don't want our help, or they, they, they don't like the idea, but.
It's kind of ironic, cause for years.
Yeah.
For years, they were saying that there should, that it should be located here at the county.
Right.
And then.
Then we, then we bring in the proposal.
You do all that work.
You have the work.
And then they do all that work, and, and now, the, the, the one community that says it should be here at the county. Is now the one that's most hesitant about doing it here at the county.
Right.
And then, if this goes away, we could end up like Manchester, trying to figure out the homeless, or they're all running.
Well, each municipality will have to do it on their own, right?
Each municipality will have to figure it out.
On their own.
And what they'll be doing is, is scurrying them from one place to another.
They'll just be shipping them back and forth.
They'll kick them out of We land and, and not, not the, the shelter, but.
The pond.
The pond, I'm talking about, you know, when you go, that. The, you know, the entrance to the pond by the gas station, you know, you see everybody walking there now. You know, when I go home.
Right.
I, I can see them all walking in the woods and that, you know, towards that area, I mean, they're certainly not going out there for any other reason.
Right.
Um, you know, so the ladies and gentlemen um are, are tenting there now, and I think everybody's just leaving them alone. But, it, you know, if, if it's rejected, they're just gonna be bounced from one place to the other.
That's what welfare directors do, they just move them around.
Plus, you know, just go to the end of the walking bridge.
Right.
You know, here at the county.
Yeah.
Uh, when we had a resident that decided he was gonna take the bus to visit his family in Exeter. And we were, he didn't tell us, and we were looking for him, um, I walked the walking bridge, and there's a whole group of people back there.
Not bothering anybody, but.
No, no, I, and they were very nice when I asked them, you know, if they saw anybody, and, and they were extremely nice, very pleasant, but. There's a whole group there.
I don't know, you know, if there was an easy answer to this, it would have been done a long time ago, there is no easy answer to it. And, and if every municipality goes on the road, it's gonna, it's gonna be hugely expensive for the property taxpayers.
You know, that's their issue.
And it's their issue, they, they can't, they can't figure it out. They'll have to, they'll have to figure it out on their own.
Right.
Cause it's not our, our statutory responsibility, it's theirs.
Right, so where.
It just been powerful, during the conversation with Dover, I told them, I said, but I was first county commissioner, the transient populations were the responsibility. And we had a whole welfare department here, and the legislature took it away from us, and said, because. The rich towns don't wanna pay the county tax, they don't support it, so, hallelujah. So they legislated, all the rich towns got together and said, we're gonna stick it to the cities, and that's the way it is, and they passed it. I remember when they did it, I told them this was a mistake, they're making a mistake with this. And we've been that way now for what, thirty?
Yeah.
Two or thirty-four years, um. And so we're right back talking about regionalizing, and the same thing problems with Manchester and Nashua, they're talking about having some kind of regional approach to doing. What they're doing, because they don't want the bird to fall just on one community.
Well, we all know that, that. The homeless population comes from everywhere, they just congregate in a community that they can walk to get services.
That's it. That's all, there's not, you know, nobody gonna be hanging out in Milton very long, they'll do so in the summer when they can hang out at the park, three, three, little three times, but after that. They're moving to where the services are, which is on the one oh eight corridor, with Goodwin. Right, you have Goodwin Healthcare up there, and they're gonna be close to that, because that's where they can get their medical.
And, and, and where they can. And where they can get the bus.
And where they can get the bus.
Man, Coast just canceled the route.
Yeah, which one are they, which one?
Driver, driver shortage, I think is what I heard. Uh, I heard, um, I got to know this, you know, a broadcast email, and there's also a, a funding cut.
Right, on the fence, yeah.
So they'll, what, what he will, what Brad will do is, is look at ridership and, and.
And get rid of them.
Problem with Coast is it's so interconnected that, you know, it's not like you can say, well, I'm just gonna cancel Route A. You know, cause Route A could lead to Route B and C and D, so when you're canceling Route A, you're, you're.
Yeah.
You're losing opportunity to connect into the other routes, so. I know it's a complicated decision that Brad makes when he, when he makes those kinds of cutbacks. Route thirty-three's still here, you know, which is our biggest concern, is, is to get people to. Southeastern, get people to our transitional housing, get people to drug court, um. You know, every day I see people, you know, from. And get, and the other thing it does, which used to be a big problem, is I'm sure you remember, uh, Commissioner. Is not getting calls from the neighbors.
Right.
Saying, you know, hey, you released somebody from the jail, and they're knocking on my door.
Right.
Uh, we used to get those calls weekly.
Yeah, so we used to, so we started transporting them back to the towns.
And then, and then, but police departments were reluctant to do that.
Didn't wanna do it.
And, you know, because they didn't have the staff, so that's what, that's one of the reasons.
One of the reasons why we hit Coast Bus.
Well, we got Coast Bus here and make that contribution to Coast to run the thirty-three, uh, cause they used to, we used to get called a week.
They walk, they leave, we, we, we would release people out of the old, the way the old system was.
Well, you have a choice, you have to release, you know, we, we can't keep them because they don't have, you know, if, oh, you don't have a ride, sorry, you gotta stay another day in jail.
Yeah.
No, it doesn't work that way.
Yeah, well, we do discharge planning now anyway, which takes a lot of that pressure off, so.
Well, I mean, the hope is that there's still family that, that are willing to pick people up, but, but there's no guarantee of that.
Right, right.
A lot of the ladies and gentlemen that are released from the jail have alienated themselves from their families, I'm sure.
Yeah, loads of fun. Well, anyway, uh, back to the, the timing of the RFP. I suppose I could tell, I could go to that public hearing and tell them, you know, it, it, it's just simple math in terms of the construction. You're looking at somewhere between three hundred and fifty and four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. Right, Sean?
Yeah, absolutely. I can farm up something a little better too, like.
It's a state, it's gonna be a stick-built building, it's not.
Right, it's nothing fancy.
There's nothing fancy about it.
But, you know, be sure to include at least ten percent for FFNE.
Right.
Right, you know, because I, I, I think that's gonna be inevitable.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, well, we'll see how it goes. You got any of the old new business you need to talk about? Hmm, Doug, so, if that's gonna be ready this Friday, you say, on the RFP.
I'll have it to you today.
Uh, today, okay, so, let's go back to the dates, the issues of dates. Um, and, and the question of whether, whether we should put it out or wait.
Well, if they're gonna, if they're gonna have a hearing on the twenty-second.
Right.
You know, that's not, that's not pushing it out too far.
How that goes.
Well, I, I just feel bad for contractors that, that, that spend money.
Sure.
You know, to put together and, and, well, that's, I consider them the same.
No, I, you know.
You know, and, and, and uh, and then only to say, huh, just kidding, we're not doing the project. You know, that's just, doesn't seem fair, um, especially where we can come up with a reasonable estimate. You know, uh.
Without doing that.
Without, without putting the contractors through that.
Yeah.
I don't know, that's just, to me, a lot of work.
It is a lot of work.
And, and when, when we talk about fairness, it's not really fair.
I know, when you need them the next time around, they're not gonna be there.
That's correct.
That's, bingo, that's my fear.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so we'll wait, why don't we wait on pushing, you, you know, you've got.
Put it together, but, but we. It would still, it would still be ha, it'd still be nice to have it by the beginning of the week, so we could review, so. These gentlemen could review it, cause they're much more familiar with this stuff than I am.
Yeah, I'll have it in your email today.
Awesome.
That'd be great, thanks, Doug. And I think I'm gonna fire, once I read that, I wanna, I wanna talk, I wanna think about this some more. We should talk about this some more, because. If they're gonna have a hearing on the twenty-second, waiting till the twenty-second, and I, we can maybe, we might be able to get some friends of ours to come up with some construction estimate, like a stick-built. We can have just some idea.
Yep.
And get, and get a range, and like races kick in, ten percent for FFNE.
And, and you're gonna kick in ten, ten, ten percent anyway for, you know.
Contingency and stuff of that nature, uh.
So like, fortunately, when we ran the, when, when we ran the electricity. And, and the sewer and water, um, with the jail, we ran it all the way around.
Perimeter.
The, the whole perimeter, in case we needed to add, in case we ever in the future. Wanted to add that third pod onto the jail.
Yeah.
We wouldn't have to dig it all up and disrupt everything, because theoretically, we could have saved some money by putting it. You know, by cutting the corner, but if we did, when we added it, if we should ever in the future add the third pod. We'd have to dig it all up and relocate it all, which would have cost us a fortune, plus we would have to re-dug the road and everything else. That's why the road swings out like it does, and that's fortunate for the Humane Society, because it goes right by where. You know.
Well, we had to do something with the Humane Society too at the time, I remember the expense.
I, I remember it well.
Because we.
We offered them, we offered them fifty thousand dollars to relocate.
To move.
It would have been cheaper, you know, towards their new building, which they had a building fund, they said, no.
Yeah.
Still, we had spent the fifty thousand, that actually probably a little more than fifty thousand to, to, you know, running electricity after that.
But now, at the end of the day, it's, at, at least it's opened up that, the potential for something else to occur there. If it's not going warming center down the road, it'll be something else. Stuff will also happen.
Well, it's, it's, you know, the infrastructure's there.
Right. One other thing I had mentioned to them was our transitional housing program, you know, this building could serve a dual purpose. For some form of transitional housing, cause we got a waiting list for, for them right now on tran, transitional housing, uh. And it, some of them are concerned about expand, capability of expanding it, and I told them, told them it had a walkout basement, so, you know, there's, there's room to do some of that stuff down the road. So there's some flexibility there, but if they don't pass, if they don't go along with this, I mean, they've got, they've been given. A multiple alternatives out here, and having the counties try to assist them, if they don't want it. They can go figure it out on their own.
I agree.
You know, I'm done, I'm done doing all this work.
You've put hundreds of hours and.
And, and have nothing, and, and have nothing come of it, it's just, it's just, it doesn't make sense, it doesn't make economic sense. It doesn't make sense to the, to the taxpayers, short or long term, so. Any of it, you got any of the old new business, bro?
No, sir.
No? Okay, yeah, oh, we got, yeah, we got the, uh, motion to accept the September twenty-fifth, uh, minutes, because we, we postponed them last night. Okay, I got a motion by Commissioner Levitt, and I'll second that we approve the September twenty-fifth minutes. In favor of him, Commissioner.
Yes.
Myself, yes, the vote unanimous. Okay, items, uh, item six, which is questions and comments from the public. Related to the agenda, I think Susan always talks about things that are, but that's okay, I don't mind that, so. Susan?
Well, can I have permission?
Yeah.
Agenda?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, listening to this discussion, it appears that you made a presentation to the city of Dover, and somebody made a presentation to the city of Summersworth.
At the request of the mayor.
Okay, so our wonderful mayor in the city of Rochester did not make that request.
That's correct.
Wonderful, okay, thank you. Um, you also said something about this year's contract. And I know that there was a couple of statements made at the last executive committee meeting, um, that. The relationship between Summersworth and Dover might not exactly be great, and I don't wanna see. The community sign this agreement for this year, and Summersworth all of a sudden say. You're not gonna have the warming shelter there, because once you sign that contract, it's a binding agreement, and what's in those four corners, that piece of paper is binding. So if all three communities sign that contract.
Well, if they sign the contract.
Then Summersworth is going to.
Housing.
Gonna have issues?
No.
And is it guaranteed that we're not gonna have issues?
No, it, 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 the contract gets signed, they're just gonna wait and not sign the contract, that's all they're gonna do.
Okay, so they're gonna hold out to be the last.
Well, I think in all fairness too, right?
Sure.
I mean, we talked, George and I talked about this last night, and in all fairness, Summersworth signed the, Summersworth. Signed the, Summersworth gave the agreement when you went on Monday night. But they deserve the right to reconsider that agreement if the circumstances change.
Right.
You know, and, and, you know, they've told us repeatedly that this is gonna be the last year at Weeland Pond, we've had about five last years.
Five last years, and then Summersworth has been great about it, I mean, they're saying, we just want a long-term plan. And we had a long-term plan, but it didn't get, it didn't get supported, so now we got a second long-term plan. If this doesn't get supported, they're out. Their, their numbers, they're out, they're just gonna say. We're done, now Dover could force it down Summersworth's throat. Okay, because they own the building in Summersworth, but that'll be a, that's gonna be a, an ugly.
Situation.
Right, yeah, but you know, you know what will happen, they'll start, they'll start shipping people back and forth, cause we used to do that. Okay, they'll ship them back and forth, and all communities do it, Bangor, Maine, did it to Portland, Maine, if you go in, uh, if you go in, in, into Maine.
Salem, Salem, just do it to the Methuen.
Yeah, Salem, yeah.
I was there.
Right, right, we used to do it, okay, we, we would say, I'm shipping you so-and-so. But back then, there was only ten repositories back then for that type of wealth, for transitional pop, transitional populations. There was only ten camps. And sometimes they'd say, well, we're gonna go to, we're gonna go to Hillsborough kinda, cause they'll give us cash to do our laundry. Okay, we used to give soap suds to go do their laundry. And, and all those types of dynamics are gonna go on here, I think it's, I think it's just total foolishness that. Short term and long term, that we don't act as a region to solve this issue, or at least. Address some of the homelessness, you're never gonna get rid of all of it, but you can get rid of, you can at least address some of it. When the commissioner comes up here in the morning, and he sees homeless sleeping on, people putting couches out to the street. With the, the waste management to pick them up on Sixth Street, and you're homeless sleeping on them in front of people's homes. They're sleeping on the benches in downtown Dover, they're sleeping in all the parks. Okay, that's what's just happening in Dover, cause I've seen them and you've seen them.
Oh, absolutely.
I know often Rochester, they have, they have a similar problem, and they have it in Summersworth, so, yeah, it's just.
It's gotta get addressed.
There's no easy answer to this, you know, if there was, it would have been done a long time ago. So anyway, you got any other questions for us, Susan?
Yeah, Doug.
Okay.
Um, so. Is there any way that maybe you can ask to be put on the workshop agenda, um, in Rochester? For this coming month to explain, um, all of this, and that our mayor, um.
Well, they voted unanimously to go forward with, with the agreement, so, I don't, I don't.
But there was no, there was no discussion, I was there, there was nothing.
Right, and, and I'm sure that there's no discussion, cause they probably all agree with the, the decision, I mean, let's face reality for a minute. The reality is, is that Rochester doesn't want these people. And they, they wanna ship them to Dover. I mean.
So, so let's get off the.
I mean, that's the reality of it, let's talk about reality for a minute, okay, I mean, I don't mind if they wanted, if the mayor wants to invite me to some workshop session up there. But the bottom line is, is that, is that they did, the council had no questions.
We, I think, I think you'd find that George offered.
I offered all, all three.
He offered all three, uh.
And they told me they would get back to me.
I, I was here, um, when he offered.
I, I, I'm not, I'm not doubting, I'm not.
No, I, no, I know, it, it, it's, you know.
I have another question.
It's a different philosophy, I guess.
Right.
How, I know that we're one point four in the deficit. Obviously, the federal government has shut down, we've been there for a little over a week. How long term? Financially, are we gonna be able to withhold or withstand this? Um, and I, I'm not gonna hold you to it, but is the one point four going to be enough as this continues? Or are we going to be going back to ask for additional money to pay our expenses?
I don't, I don't believe so, um, I have, um. I received some communication yesterday, um, uh. About, from the Maine Marshals.
Yeah.
And, um, they are continuing, you know, their boarding with us. Uh, you know, with the indication that we're gonna get paid, so if, if one entity's gonna pay us, they're all gonna pay us. That's my biggest concern, was, was the boarding at, at the House of Correction, um, it, it's somebody different. But because we're consistent in our billing, we've established relationships with these people. Um, and, and we. Look, let's just be frank about this, why am I dancing around, my wife got the text last night, about seven o'clock. From the woman who didn't get laid off in the Maine Marshal's office, who's now having to take that back over. So we called Chris, forwarded the email to Chris, and Chris has worked on that this, this morning, cause they wanna send him. They, they want them to send somebody down to, to go into, uh, uh.
And there's, and there's only certain.
Our therapeutic.
There's only, I mean, this, this thing's been pulled aside, there's only certain aspects of the federal government that are shut down.
So we, we have every reason to believe we're gonna get paid in, in boarding, and we've never. I, i- in previous shutdowns, we've always been paid for Medicaid.
They catch it off, right?
Well, yeah, it's, the only problem is, is we're cash short.
Right.
You know, it, it, right, you know, that, but I have every reason to believe, we have no real, no federal grants. So the nice part is, we're not gonna be without the grant money, you know, that we're spending and then getting reimbursed, cause we have no federal grants. All our grants are state-sponsored grants, which we have every reason to believe were, like this thirty thousand dollar prosecutor grant that. You, you gentlemen approved this morning, we have every reason to believe we'll continue to get paid for everything, so, uh. As best I know.
The state has the money for the roof.
And the state already, that money is sitting there.
It, it's at the state, so.
You know, so, and, and we've had constant communication with them, in fact, you just sent me a copy of an email.
Oh, they're monitoring.
Yeah, you know, they're, they're monitoring this roof project, um, uh, Diane sent them a whole bunch of information. And they sent a thank you note back to Diane for sending the information, so that money, the, the. Like all the other ARPA money, that was, that was funded in advance.
Yeah.
So the state's just sitting there with this money, so we have every reason to believe, you know.
And they turned back sixty million.
Well, I know.
You're gonna love it.
That was, that was ridiculous.
That's just.
You know, the towns, I'm, I'm sure that there could have been a way in which the towns. You know, or the cities, or the counties.
We could have used it.
We could have used it.
We could have used it, but it got, you know, votes to vote, you know, and, and, and.
And we, we begged for some money too.
Yeah, and they said, oh, we're out of it, we're out of it.
Yeah, they told us they're out of money, and, and then, and then they, then it's in the paper, they turned back sixty million, uh, in ARPA funds.
So ridiculous.
Anyway.
So, in other words, you're comfortable.
Yes.
That.
Historically, when we've had shutdowns, we've had a lot of shutdowns.
I know, but.
Yes, we're comfortable, yes, we're comfortable.
Yeah, we've always gotten paid.
No, they, no, Douglas is getting a little nervous, cause we haven't paid them, but we, we will.
Yeah.
Hey, it's better than the one, you know, the, can I talk about that for just a second? Uh, I just wish that. Since somebody would recognize the fact that we had an employee who went out of her way. To get in, insurance for these people, otherwise, we'd be looking at.
Means.
We'd be, it'd be one point nine million dollars plus the security.
Right.
And, and instead, and I understand why nobody wants to pay the three hundred thousand dollar balance. But nobody recognizes the one point six million dollars that was saved. Because somebody took the initiative, I mean, when this was being done, we didn't know this guy was gonna get sick.
Right.
You know, and, and, and so it's unfortunate that that person, you know, doesn't get recognized for. You know, the ingenuity to do the one, to save the county one point six million dollars, and it wasn't me, I assure you. Um, you know, they saw the opportunity for a free program, and they took it, and, and it ended up saving us one point six million dollars.
Save us more than.
Should, that, um, and.
Cause it was a few years ago, we'd have paid it all.
We would have paid it all, we, we've paid it all in the past, unfortunately, it was not as extreme.
Anyways, I would like to thank you guys for letting me go after agenda, thank you.
Okay, we all set down with everybody, all right, we got a motion to move to non-public session. First, to discuss personnel issues and contract negotiations, uh, can I do that, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, and I'll second that, it's a roll call, Commissioner Levitt, and myself, she asks. Commissioner will return to non-public session.